I'm calling this meeting to order. Please join me for flag sweep and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scott, would you lead us in our communication?
Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity together here tonight. We ask that you be with each and every member of this body as we make decisions impacting citizens of Alba. We ask that you be with all of those citizens out there that are suffering or that are having hard times. We ask that our decisions be in accord with making life better for those that live in Alba. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Flag of the court, yes, this is me. I'd like to have the clerk call the roll and declare, Nancy?
Chris Benson. Scott Brown.
President.
Chad Fisher.
President.
Bill Hannifer.
President.
Wes Miller.
President.
Terry Layle.
President.
Steve Valencia.
President.
Jessica Cruz.
Item number four, discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports of items of routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one member of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be moved from the consent agenda and placed to the discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. They will then be considered separate. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action of the following items. A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 15th through 2014. B, the approval of claims. And C, acknowledgement of the closure of the checking account of the City of Alba EFTPS account at Bank Central. Is there a motion that this consent agenda be approved?
I would make the note that claims for this fund are going to be $358,580.87.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to request that item C be considered separately as it does not seem to be a routine and made, normally approved type of item. I don't think we'll be closing accounts every council meeting. With that, I would like to make the motion that we approve items A and B of the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by, real and second by Valencia. Any discussion? Clerk, they call the roll.
Brown.
Yes.
Valencia.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Hannifer.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Layle.
Yes.
Under item number five, we will deal with letter C from the agenda of item acknowledgement of the closure of the checking account on the City of Alba EFTPS account at Bank Central. First of all, what does EFTPS?
Well, this account was originally set up for payroll taxes to be deposited into so that it can be drafted separately. We are no longer utilizing this account. We are, our taxes, our employer, employer payroll taxes are being drafted right out of our pool cash account. And that's by design. And we're just no longer needing this account, even on the record that we are, you have acknowledged the closure of that account. There will be other accounts in the future that we will be closing since we switched over to the pool cash form of managing our cash that we will no longer need. And this is just the first of several that will be, end up being closed. There's currently, so there's currently about $49 in that account, and that money will be deposited over into the general fund.
Is there further discussion? Is there a motion then that the acknowledgement of the closure of this account be approved?
So.
Uh, second.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Clerk, they call the roll.
Miller.
Yes.
Hannifer.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Layle.
Yes.
And Valencia.
Item number six, reports from boards and officers. I'll kick off with the reports with the library report. The Friends of the Alba Public Library in conjunction with the Alba Public Library will be starting the Let's Talk About It Fall Book Discussion Series. The first program is September 19th, and the focus is Making Sense of the Civil War. There are five sessions exploring different facets of the Civil War experience, and for this series, there are only three books. People are welcome to attend the presentation slash discussion even if they don't have time to read the books. The books and schedules are available at the Alba Public Library. The library will use the video conferencing equipment on September the 9th to view a performance showcase for area libraries. This allows the librarians to view actual programs conducted by various performers that are available to present programming for youth throughout the year and for the summer reading program. The showcase is held in Stillwater and will be sent to selected libraries so the staff members will not need to travel. Enid, Woodward, and Alba were chosen from the area to host other libraries for this day-long presentation. The library will also be hosting an Oklahoma Department of Libraries certification class for librarians on September the 16th. Signups are starting for the MacGyver timed sessions for fourth and fifth grade students and for the monthly book collection for youth in fourth through sixth grade and sixth to eighth grade. These sessions will start to be a part of the September, of September 4th. Now let's go to Joe Don and the report from the Street and Alley Committee.
Well, the Street and Alley Committee talked about our street developments and the new equipment that we had bought and how we were going to maintain that equipment. And Councilman Brown is the chairperson for that committee, and I'd certainly let him...
We had a rather lengthy meeting and discussion about all of the new equipment and its usage. Moisture being the number one enemy to putting down oils was part of the report that we heard from the Street Department Director is that with any moisture remaining in the surface, putting down the oils causes separation, which is the next loophole we're going to see. So they need to wait until things are dry. Debris being put on the streets is still a concern as it helps to retain those moistures. They don't like me mentioning that because they seem to think that that increases the occurrence of people putting stuff on the streets, which if that be the case, shame on all of them. And the other thing is, is all of this new equipment that we have recently purchased, some which has no cab or structure covering the seating, is going to sit outside and become weathered due to weathering conditions. So a large percentage of the meeting was spent discussing the need for developing a plan to get some sort of covering, building structure, lean to structure for the equipment that the Street Department has. I believe that's it. That covered it?
Pretty much covered it, gentlemen. The next meeting that's on this agenda, as a board report, is from the Alba Hospital Authority and our representative, Mr. Brown is our representative there also.
Trying to think of what stood out from the hospital board meeting. Perhaps one of the biggest was that we heard, very similar to report that we heard in here on Homestead and positive things happening at the Homestead. We did get to partake in the new food service being provided out there. They provided us with a Mexican pile-on type of meal, and it was quite delicious out there. And things are looking better and better each month at Share Hospital. Biggest recognition of all, of course, was going to Jane Gaskell with her retirement after 42 years from the Share system. That is highly commendable, 42 years of service to Share Medical Center and convalescent home for Jane Gaskell.
And I want to thank you for meeting and brought the nation.
Well, our next board meeting, it'll be just in chronological order, is the ARC Board Meeting from August 20th. A lot of the meeting discussion centered around the finances of the REC Center and There was quite a bit of discussion about what encumbrances had been made and that we do have, at least showing up in for a few of the months, is a double encumbrance of the Slater Mechanical Fund. And what had happened there was that we had approved that, we encumbered the money. Then we changed some processes. When we changed those processes, those payments were not going to be made appropriately or the way they should be. So new purchase orders were issued. The old purchase orders were voided. And not really sure why they're still showing up as void. I think it's got something to do with the reason we, because we haven't closed out the fiscal year yet. But there are, there are no funds missing or everything that has been spent has been accounted for, is being accounted for. But the crutch to that issue was the double purchase orders for the REC Center's gym, air conditioner, GM air conditioner. And the council representative for that committee is Mr. Fisher. I'm sorry, I had somebody else on my mind named Chad, but Mr. Fisher is our representative there, and I'd like him to make any comment that he can choose to make about that meeting.
I think you covered that pretty well. There wasn't much other than that.
The next two meetings, really, I'll hit both, two of these at the same time. One was the Tourism Tax Committee meeting on August 20th, and then they had a special meeting on the 27th. On the 20th, there was really nothing, nothing that had taken place at that meeting. Approval of minutes, approval of finance report. On the 27th, they did approve the funds for the Salt Fork Film Festival, not to exceed And that is to take place in the next couple of months, I believe. We also had on the 20th a Nwada meeting. Nwada stands for Northwest Oklahoma Action Team. If you recall, a few months ago, we did approve the city joining this team with a, with a fee of $10,000. The other communities that are currently on this, on this action team would be the City of Enid, City of Woodward, Fairview, Jet, the Northwest Oklahoma Irrigators Association, Devon Energy, American Farmers and Ranchers. The steering committee is still recruiting some members. They would like to have representatives from both Sandridge and Chesapeake. Dwayne Smith has been hired to oversee the development of the action plan, the water action plan we'd like to have developed. The City of Alba does have voted membership of that, with both the mayor and myself serving on that team. The, and the next meeting is going to be in the next few weeks and will be held here in Alba.
Is it October 30th?
I definitely get my calendar out to see exactly. I can't recall the exact date, but it's within the next few weeks, and it will be held here in Alba. The next board report would be, the committee report would be from the Finance Committee. We had a couple of our finance committee members missing tonight, so it was just Councilman Miller and myself. And I'd let Councilman Miller make any comments he'd like to make about that meeting.
We went over claims, and I'll just hit a few that, since we go to the consent agenda, a few of these just kind of get lost in the mix. But a few of the large claims that we had this week were workers' comp with OMAG, nearly The ventilator that is on the agenda for later is in those claims. We had bulk fuel of $18,000, rental of the pneumatic roller for $3,900. The Tourism Fund had a payment of $150,000 for the Alba Education Convention Center construction that they had approved, I believe it was two months ago. And the, we had a payment to the Slater Mechanical for the gym, heating and air of barely $80,000, and then $106,000 in payable expenses. Other than going over a few of those, Joe Don and I talked about possible sewer extension and financing costs for that. And since we've got a number, we didn't have a whole lot else to discuss as far as funding.
I guess that brings me to my manager's report. There are a few items I would like to touch base on. Our sanitation transfer station, this has been a big concern of mine over the last couple of weeks. Did meet with, on August 26th, I did meet with engineers to discuss this project and our, how we were progressing on it. And as of the 26th, there were no bids. There'd been no bid packets picked up by any of the construction companies that had been contacted. So upon the advice of engineers, we did extend the bid opening date, and they sent out the documentation until September 18th. That's a two-week extension, and we'll see how we kind of get, how we come along on that. Our AMR water meter replacement project, we've got the RFP basically ready. It needs a few key elements such as meter, meter size counts. We do have, we have accumulated those numbers. I just need to go through and count out how many 5'8" meters, how many inch meters, and things like that, so we can fill in our blanks. And then that RFP will be released. I have been in contact with several companies that are looking forward to getting that RFP. We did receive a Department of Forests grant for the Alba Fire Department in the amount of $4,484.35. This was an anticipated grant during the budget process, so the funds for this and the expenditures were budgeted for. Some of the expenditures that can be utilized when this money can be spent on are maintenance of the fire department, purchase of supplies, apparatus equipment, maintenance of fire hydrants, and payment of insurance premiums. The Police Department over the last couple of weeks has applied for two grants. One of them is a grant to purchase two in-car video camera systems in the amount of $9,950. This will come from the Oklahoma JAG office. The other is to pay for traffic enforcement with an effort for drunk driving. This grants an amount of $10,500. So a lot of that $10,000 will go toward salaries for additional personnel. Overtime for personnel to work extra shifts. Shouldn't say additional personnel. They will be focusing on drunk driving. They, they are going to buy a couple of new breathalyzer, just a kit to have in cars to help with that. We do have a Water and Sewer Committee meeting immediately following this meeting. The Oklahoma Tax Commission Liaison Board will meet on September 10th. And, let's see, would remind the council that we do have, there is an OML meeting, OML conference, the 22nd through the 25th of this month, the 25th of this month. I am registered for that conference. The mayor is registered for that conference, and I believe Councilman Valencia was going to go to that conference. If anybody else would like to attend, please get you the information in to me so we can get that put together and make sure you've got, make sure you've got a room if you'll be spending the night. And I believe, ma'am, that would be all at this time.
Any questions if you're up concerning the city manager's report?
Joe Don, just, I know I'm being picky here, but on your manager's report, is there any way, like terms with JAG and OHHSO that we could avoid the acronyms and have those spelled out?
Yes, sir. That would be a problem, though.
Thank you.
Item number seven, council discussion to change monthly meetings. Change five monthly meetings to one responsibility.
Well, this was talked about some during my manager's report last month. At the last meeting, it has been discussed with, at least the Finance Committee, and I felt it appropriately to at least put it on the agenda for this committee to discuss, this council to discuss openly about that. There, there are a lot of things that would need to be changed that would need to, if we decide to go to monthly meetings. Some of those changes probably need to occur anyway, but just kind of like to open that up for discussion.
Would this require a resolution or a change of ordinance?
Ordinance. It would require a change of ordinance and require us to pass an ordinance for purchasing to allow us to put, to make our payments in a timely manner.
The state statute just requires a single monthly meeting, but by all, the city ordinance currently in effect requires two meetings. So the ordinance for there would have to be changed, and as Joe Don indicated, there'd be some qualification to allow payment of bills to be, maybe change in the system. Whether the claims are currently due.
This comes from Finance Committee. Was it initially a request for that committee specific, or was...
No, it was, it was brought up at that committee by a councilman that is not here, that couldn't make it tonight, but it was brought up at that meeting. Could we change? The answer is yes, we can, but do you want to? I mean, that's, that was one person's thoughts, and I mean, I think before we go through the effort to make the ordinance change for the council, the city council to make the ordinance change for the meetings and things like that, you need to see if that's what the council wants to do. If the council doesn't want to do that, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time. I'm sure he's got other things he'd rather be doing too, or needs to be done, maybe not rather be doing, but needs to be done, other than drafting an ordinance to allow for this.
If there are things, if something comes up that's important and you've done, what do you do if you're a monthly meeting then? Special? Special meetings?
You could have a special. The one thing, one of the big drawbacks that I see in going to once-a-month meetings is the purchasing ordinance that I have currently drafted and had it before the Finance Committee would require council approval for capital purchases over $7,500. That may or may not be what the number that we land on, but that's where we started out. And that would make it where council would have to approve anything over $7,500. And for example, with this meeting, there are four items that were approved over that amount. I feel like that there needs to be some council approval for those purchases, and that would limit us to doing it once a month, because I don't think that I would call a special meeting to have, to approve a purchase. There would have to be some other, some other reason to make that, make that meeting special. Something that was in dire, we were just in dire need of, had to buy tomorrow.
Would that slow down the process of getting things, or...
It would, I don't know that it would slow the process down any. It would certainly make us think ahead a little bit further when we go to buy something. If we were going to buy this equipment that would authorize it, that I'm going to ask you to authorize tonight, you know, we would have had to plan that out a little bit more than, you know, they came up to me last week and say, Joe Don, I'd like to buy this stuff. And that wasn't quite the way it's happened. But it takes a little bit more planning to make sure those things are purchased in a timely manner.
And we continue with our biweekly payroll?
Yes. Do we continue with our biweekly payroll?
Or biweekly?
Bi, no, that's biweekly. Biweekly payroll. That would also remain the same. We would still need to pay our vendors more than once a month, make sure that I was, you know, we still, and we do it, is biweekly payment still vendors. So I mean, but it's, it's totally up to this, this board as to whether or not we want to proceed with that.
Well, you've obviously pointed out some disadvantages. What would the advantages be? That's what we usually do, is list the advantages versus disadvantages. Would anyone like to speak to the advantages of, of the...
Well, Joe Don, I talked about in the Finance Committee, one of them is the amount of time spent by people in the office preparing for the meeting. We'd reduce to once a month. We didn't talk specific amount of hours, but that's hours that could be redirected towards other things.
That's a good point.
The, the other advantage is, is a lot of, a lot of our meetings, we do have standard bookkeeping, and we're taking care of it, just like the consent agenda, board reports, those things combined in once a month. So, and there's several advantages. I mean, there's, there's obviously, there could be self-prejudice for just meeting once a month, or twice a month, for all of us that are working and planning, coming to meetings, there's those reasons as well. I'm saying that that's the reason, and I would say, yeah or no, but that would be one advantage is several self-employment vehicles as far as scheduling time away from when we have to be out of town.
Because if we don't have a core, we can't keep that business.
I guess some of my thoughts, I, the idea of modifying the purchasing or expenditure, that certainly has appealed, because I'm curious, then does that allow us to actually more promptly take care of some expenditures, whether we change the number of meetings we have or not, considering that and looking at that procedure and policy, I think is a good idea regardless of what we do with meeting time. I personally, you know, for me, attending twice a month some months is difficult, but I also think that we have meaningful agendas on two times a month. I don't know, if we're going to consolidate, I would like to see consolidation become, this meeting's going to go from a 30-minute meeting to a 75-minute meeting, 90-minute meeting every time, which is okay with me. I think most other boards, commissions within Alba meet once a month, but I don't know if others meet twice a month. I think my expectation would be that the agenda would become even more hearty and meaningful with the once-a-month meeting.
Kind of what was behind that, when it was first brought up, it was, the agenda for that meeting had nothing on it other than minutes, claims, remarks by council and citizens, and that was it. And so, in my memory, that's the first one we've had like that.
And I would also say, serving on the hospital, that we do have similar format with consent, and there are some meetings, there are some months where we're in and out of there in over 20 minutes, because there are not any outstanding or unusual items for us to consider. items for us to consider, so, um, yeah. To me, it doesn't matter the number of meetings, it's more so the content of what the agenda is asking us to look at.
I think Nancy was at a meeting, a training session a couple of, couple, about two weeks ago now, and they did discuss this at that training session, and I think with what Nancy has told me, that there are other communities considering the same thing, and I think probably for the same reason. Um, but I'm going to make it work however you all want me to make it work.
Would the board like to think about it for the next two weeks and have this appear on the next agenda for additional consideration and action? That might as just a consideration.
I'd like to still hear two of the council. I think especially the one that brought it up.
Yeah, I'd say wait two weeks.
Wouldn't be the first, first week of the month?
See, it's, it's, um...
That was something the finance committee did talk about, and it looked like the, actually the third Monday is what worked best for...
The third Monday's planning.
What's that?
The third Monday's planning. Never mind.
Third Monday, no. Third might even be a council meeting. Uh, the, uh, for preparation of summer, forced to make a timing, especially the finance forced to make a timing, the third meeting of the month would work better.
I think that voided all of this as well.
The ones that we could think of are just...
Yeah.
So there would be less, uh, less meeting on Tuesday like this to catch up.
Well, due to the absence of two of the council members, let's put this on the next agenda for additional discussion. Do you want an action item on that as well?
Um, would we need to be an action item for the, for this direction to proceed?
Well, there really shouldn't be. Wouldn't it just be kind of decide to prepare the ordinance? Well, I mean, you'll want the business manager myself and some of them, because there really needs to be a two-fold process, I think, before you, you do the modification of when the meetings are, we need to make sure we have everything aligned from the financial side that is in place, and it would be, can be simultaneous, but we need to make sure all the snags are looked at and addressed later. I, I would think, I'd recommend just put it as consideration and action, and if the council doesn't want to take any action by that time, I don't know.
Then let's move on. Item number eight, discussion on actual purchase of a new PowerPro X-T-Cot, service agreement and other related equipment from ambulance department from Stryker EMS equipment in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents.
Well, this is, uh, equipment for our ambulance that we received, you know, on July twenty-first, uh, the city council approved, uh, Oklahoma Department of Health grant, uh, and we received that for seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. This was part of the equipment that was in that grant. Uh, the actual cost of the, uh, cot and accessories is fourteen thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. Uh, a five-year service protection agreement is two thousand four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents. Um, that's the total. This was bid out, and we did get quotes from, uh, Stryker EMS, professional ambulance sales and service, uh, more medical. Um, what is shown on the back is the bid, the bid tabulation for the, uh, cot itself. Um, the five-year protection plan is offered solely by Stryker EMS at twenty-four hundred dollars. So if we decided to go with either one of these other, uh, companies, we would have to tack on an additional twenty-four hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents to their price, uh, for the cost of that protection, service protection agreement. This equipment will certainly benefit our ambulance department, and, um, I would certainly recommend that we accept the bid from Stryker, uh, in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-four dollars and thirty-four cents.
Is your motion to approve this purchase? And service agreement?
Senator.
Motion by Henry, second by Brown.
This one. I guess.
Second by Fisher.
It's close. I put my glasses on.
Same time you're wearing. And the reason you're not stepping in, that is below bid without the five-year service protection thing, the reason that you've taken it with that plan is because the other companies don't offer that type of a plan.
That's correct. They do not, Stryker is the only company that will, this, these are all for Stryker beds. The Stryker has a sole source on the service protection agreement.
Do you have a motion in the second? By the white people? Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Annifer?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yeah.
Item number nine, discussion on actual purchase of a sole source purchase, a new power load system for the ambulance department from Stryker EMS equipment in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. That's under, tabbed under, Joe Don?
Yes, it is. And this is a, the second portion of some equipment that was to be purchased with that grant. Uh, it is sole source from Stryker EMS, uh, EMS equipment, uh, is not available from anybody else. Um, the amount of power load system which will be installed on ambulance number nineteen to assist with the loading of the new cot is twenty thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, installation of this equipment will be completed by a third, by a third-party, uh, Stryker EMS equipment qualified company. Uh, expectation on the installation cost will be about fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, the service, the, the service protection agreement for this, this portion of the, uh, cot, uh, load system is four thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. And again, this is a sole source item. Uh, have provided a sole source letter for the, for the load system.
Any discussion about this purchase?
The installation of... The installation will be done by a third-party EM, uh, Stryker EMS, Stryker EMS equipment qualified company. They will not come down and install the equipment, we will have a third party do that.
And that is an additional?
About, we expect it to be an additional fifteen hundred dollars, and that will be taken here over a separate, we'll, number of separate items, we will, we will, bid would probably, because of it being only fifteen hundred dollars, we will...
That's all, it's not really part of the...
No, it's not part of this. No, that will be an additional cost. It is part of the grant funds that we receive, that what, the fifteen hundred dollars was figured into the grant funds that we receive, uh, for the entire equipment.
Would you like to make that provision?
Uh, a motion to, uh, purchase the new power load system, six-year service protection plan to the ambulance department from Stryker EMS, in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Motion by Henry.
Wait, make sure that's the equipment and the plan, is that correct?
Yeah, and the six-year service protection plan.
I just didn't hear the clear part.
Motion by Henry, is that how it goes? Any discussion?
Uh, Mayor, I would say that I did talk to one of the medics on our ambulance crews, and if you take a look, we've got some really outstanding medics right now, but imagine them trying to assist a three-hundred-and-fifty-pound person in the back car, and insist to go provide the services that they have to provide. Rather challenging is, evidently, the medford service that comes this way has this system. They've all been familiarized with it through that and are very impressed and pleased to be able to utilize something like that, so I know they're going to appreciate this as a great idea.
Clerk, may I call the roll?
Annifer?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Fisher?
Brown.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Item number ten, discussion on actual purchase from state contract pricing of a new LifePact fifteen for the ambulance department from Isio Control Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed forty thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-six. You can see that item number ten.
And that evidently I didn't hit save before I hit print, uh, so because the background information is not correct. Um, as far as the equipment is concerned, it is part of the seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollar grant that we received, um, from the Oklahoma Department of Health, uh, but this LifePact fifteen is a defibrillator, uh, monitor, CPR pace, CPR device. Um, it is a fully escalating, multi-parameter monitor defibrillator. It's got two pair of quick leak combos, uh, electrodes, uh, test load, it comes with a service manual, hard paddles, carrying case, um, rechargeable lithium battery, um, numerous other items, but it is a defibrillator, uh, that will be carried into our ambulance. We do have one piece of equipment that is similar to this, it's a little bit older piece of equipment. Um, this does have a, uh, five-year, uh, service agreement with it, um, but that, that's what this piece of equipment is. Again, I apologize for the background mess-up.
So it does include the five-year service contract?
Yes, it does include the five-year service contract. Part of the, the, the total with the five-year service contract is forty thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and seventy cents. The, uh, service contract by itself is five thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Uh, this is being purchased off of the state grant, uh, I mean, the state contract, that's the reason it was not bid out. Uh, the state of Oklahoma, central purchasing has the contract for this piece of equipment.
Is your motion in this purchase be approved? Motion by Miller?
Senator.
Our, the second by you. Any discussion?
And that's not to exceed forty thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and seventy cents? Yes. That includes the service contract.
Motion, second, discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Miller?
Yes.
Annifer?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Annner?
Yes.
Item number eleven, discussion on actual purchase of a state contract pricing of a new portable ventilator, maintenance agreement and supplies for the ambulance department from Impact Instrumentation Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand ninety-five dollars and forty cents, at number eleven.
And this purchase again is from the grant that we received, uh, from the Oklahoma Department of Health. Um, the, uh, it is a state, uh, state contract pricing purchase from Impact Instrumentation E. Uh, the cost of the ventilator by itself is thirteen thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Uh, the maintenance agreement is two thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars, and we're also purchasing some initial supplies, uh, that totaled about eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty cents. Um, again, it is, uh, we'll go on into the ambulance department. This ventilator is, uh, portable between ambulances, but I believe it will be, um, located on unit nineteen by itself. Uh, unit nineteen, I think, is one of our new, is the newest unit that we received. And, uh, uh, the ambulance department would, um, certainly benefit from this also.
So this motion would be for the portable ventilator maintenance agreement and supplies in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand nine hundred and forty. Is there a motion to that? Motion by Henry.
A motion to approve the purchase of those items, do that, that sign? Yes.
Second by Miller?
Sure. Yes, I'll take that.
Any discussion? Clerk may call the roll.
Annifer?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Brown? Yes.
The ambulance department sends their gratifications for all these purchases. Uh, Mr. Campbell would have been here tonight to help explain what these items do, uh, except, um, I believe they were inducing labor on his wife today, and so he couldn't attend.
That's what they do, anything to get out of our city.
But I, I know that they certainly appreciate that.
Item number twelve, or remarks that even raised by citizens?
At least I don't have to take a number tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I, if I can stand up here, that way I can see everyone. I don't want to blend in the air of mystery as to why I'm here. My name is Linda Brown, and I'm with Alba Concrete, and I reside in Conca City, but I, I, well, first of all, hi, Joe Don, it's nice to finally...
Nice to finally meet you, sorry.
I've talked with him quite a bit over the last couple of weeks, and I just wanted to make the council aware, uh, kind of of our timing as relates to when we, the railroad, as you know where we're located now, we're, um, working with the railroad, which I'm sure is no secret to anyone in here, that the railroad's going to double-track that down there, and when they do, they're going to come through the middle of our concrete operation, which isn't going to bode very well for producing concrete. And so within, we, we suspected that in a very, very short, you know, a short amount of time, we will be relocating Alba Concrete altogether. And when we purchase the property, uh, that where we are going to relocate, and we will, the Alba Concrete plant will remain in operation, that is part of our deal with the railroad, that we'll be able to go out, build a whole new operation, and this plant will not shut down until the, uh, new plant is up and running, but we have a very limited amount of time to do that. They're not just going to give us endless time to make our relocation. So we've got a window working when we purchase the property, it was out of the city limits. Uh, of course, today it is still out of the city limits, but about a week before we closed on the property, we learned that the city is, is at least considering, it certainly hasn't been considered or approved by this council, that the possibility that we will be annexed into the, uh, city limits. And so my purpose here tonight is no more than to get acquainted with your council and how many members you have, and kind of how your water and sewer works, because I hope that, that Alba Concrete has always been a good citizen, will continue to be a good citizen, and we're excited about being in the city limits, that's absolutely fine with us, we've been inside the city limits all the time that we've owned it, which has been the early nineties when we bought from Donna Hodgson. So the main thing is, we're going to have to proceed very quickly, and I know that your timeline to consider annexation and decide whether you're going to do it or not may be such that what we do out there as far as bringing utilities onto our property and roads that surround the property and how we get our ambulance trucks in and out of the property, all of those kinds of things, even though we could probably have most of it done before you all consider that annexation proposal, if you choose to do that, we want to make sure that when we do it, it's in accordance with what the city would want done, so that we're not setting out there something that's a sore to you in considering on taking annexation. And so my, I told Joe Don, I said, my sole purpose is to come over and just get acquainted with you, let you know we want to continue to be a good citizen, if you make the decision to annex that property, and I'm terrible at directions, south, right, south of town, uh, and as I understand, we are in that as long as we're zoned properly. Uh, and as I understand, we are in that as long as we're zoned properly, uh, and I know that Joe Don's working on that, as long as we're zoned properly when we come in, we are hoping that our utilities, uh, our ingress, egress, all of those things would be satisfactory, up to the standards of the city. But I'm going to have to kind of know what those things are and begin to plan for that right now, so that, uh, we can move forward before you probably consider that for us. So, that's the sole purpose of my coming here tonight and getting acquainted with you, and then hopefully get acquainted with the utility authorities committee, as I understand the other subcommittee, and so that we can, so we can proceed as you want to. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, for your period. Remarks and inquiries by council members. Here is that, we'll close this meeting. Meeting of the Utility Authority. Item number one, I call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call and declaration of quorum. Nancy?
Scott Brown?
Yes.
Chad Fisher?
Yes.
Bo Hennifer?
Present.
Wes Miller?
Yes.
Gary Layle?
Yes.
Steve Valencia?
Yes.
Jessica Curry? Bryce Benson?
Okay, item number three is discussion on action on the consent agenda. Do I need to read that, or may I just ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I do, I'm a reader.
All of the following items, which concern reports and items used by the community authority. Of routine nature, normally approved at all, uh, city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda this evening consists of consideration and action on the following items. A, approval of a minute for the regular meeting of August 18th, 2014, and B, the approval of claims. Is your motion of the consent agenda being approved?
Claims are at $30,157.60 for the Alba Utility Authority claim.
I might note, with base reference to the council meetings, that needs to be a future reference, that Utility Authority.
Yeah. Is your motion of the consent agenda being approved?
So.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by Miller? Any discussion? Clerk McCall, roll.
Fisher?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.
Layle?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And that's the last item on the agenda, so we'll close that meeting and open the meeting on the Development Authority. First will be our call to order, and then roll call and declaration of quorum. Nancy?
Uh, Scott Brown?
Present.
Chad Fisher?
Present.
Bo Hennifer?
Present.
Wes Miller?
Yes.
Gary Layle?
Present.
Steve Valencia?
Present.
Jessica Curry? Bryce Benson?
Item number, and there is a quote, item number three, discussion on action on the consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved at, at city council meetings, in this case, it can be the Development Authority meeting, will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent, consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists, motion then of these surplus tiers being disposed of. And Fisher, on the council. Motion for Layle?
Second.
Fisher?
No, it includes the burden of surplus. I know you said the disposal, but that includes.
The burden, sure. Any questions? And a motion in second. Any discussion? Clerk McCall, roll.
Leo?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Hennifer?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Valencia?
Yes.